Now to make sure that we acknowledge it. With that being said, I can say that I have been a part of the importance of having community gardens. I am, I can say I've been a part of that and also been a part of Southeastern Connecticut Community Land Trust. So the importance of housing. So when I say something, it's what I believe and I stand on that. See, it's really important when we think about the building homes. One of the things that I think everyone should have the right is to have a home. And this is an opportunity to offer three homes to a family. A family that they can raise their children and they can decide if they're going to have a garden in their home. I don't think it's right to tell people, "We're going to let you, we're going to build this home, we're going to make it affordable, but the community have to have 24 hours into your backyard." We wouldn't do that to anyone else because they're low income, we're going to put restrictions on them? If we're saying that we're truly want families to have a home to be able to support their family, we need to also give them the right to have the things that they want in their family. But like I said, I believe in gardens. I have been near, supported it, been a part of Fresh, was their fiduciary, the Drop-In Learning Center. When they started having youth involved, a lot of my youth, this is something that they still believe in. We still, gardening, we started our planting. And you know, this is something that I believe in. But I also believe that we have to have a balance. We need to work together and we need to make sure that when we come to situations like this and, okay, we got to balance this out and making sure that we're having gardens, we having homes. I just think we need to stop arguing and say, okay, how can we work this out? And I appreciate when it was brought up, Mr. Stoller, when he came and spoke, and I think Joe, Mary Jo, when she came to spoke, she stated, you know, if we can move it, that will be so appreciative. You know, we, you know, and that's what I'm talking about, just balance. And that's where I stand at today. Because I really don't like us against them because it's all of us. This is a community, this is a city, and we better start working together and stop arguing over something that can be settled. I yield the floor. Thank you.
Okay. Pardon?
Thank you to Director Gupta. I'm very excited about this. Appreciate that. And thank you to Debbie for your words, your kind words about Jocelyn, and that was very touching. And I do want to say that I do support the idea that this needs to get referred, the Adelaide decision needs to get referred. And with due respect to people about finding balance, I think, as Ronna said, finding balance in the plan is not picking one over the other, not picking winners and losers, but I feel like we're close enough to a solution that if the committee were to take it up in a thoughtful manner, it could make a thoughtful recommendation. And I don't want to preclude what that recommendation is, but I just don't think we're done yet when there's still a solution out there. I don't necessarily think that we have to decide today who wins and loses. There's other sites to consider. If there's other sites to move it to, that should also be part of the discussion. You know, I'd like, I'd like the committee to make a specific recommendation about a path forward and not just punt on it because it's a matter of import to the community that they've brought to us for our attention. So I'd like to give it that space. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Rosario.
Thank you, President Dominguez. Thank you for all the public comments, for coming out tonight. For all those who are expressing their concerns about the community garden, as Counselor Dice and Hart said, we all support that and I do not believe that any of us won't be on your side, guys. This is something that we're still working on it and it's not done. So thank you so much for expressing your worries about this topic. Director of the Library, Gura, thank you for always keeping us informed. This is great. Thank you for informing us. And also, Ms. Phillips, thank you for mentioning this name to the community, for Jocelyn Wakefield. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family. This is something that really breaks, break our hearts. It is no worse ever with a loss, but as a community that cares that we are here in any way that can support the family. So thank you for taking the time and expressing your concern about this situation too. Thank you and have a good night.
All right, Sadie.
Thank you, President Dominguez, to Ronna Stoller, Aaron Walker, Rob Stoller, Debbie Phillips, and the Director of the Library, Gupta. Thank you very much for coming out. As Counselor Dice said, there has to be a balance. I fully support the garden. I do not necessarily support it in the place that it's at. Hopefully, it's going to be able to be moved across the street. Hopefully, we're going to be able to take a bucket, lift the good soil that you people have made and created and move that by truck or by bucket to wherever the new location is. I could say a lot more, but unfortunately, we have some pending matters before the council, so I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. All right, with that, I am going to add 8.3 Exxon contract ordinance. I need to, I'm going to make a motion to add that, so all those in favor, say aye.
Point of order. I believe that's three subsection B.
Yeah, 8.3, yeah, B. Thank you. 8.3B ordinance for Exxon contract. The motion has been seconded, okay? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, okay? That has been added to our agenda.
I'd also like to add 8.8, letter supporting special education funding to this evening's agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been seconded by President Pro Temp Peck. All right, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries, all right. I'm going to change up, I'm going to change it up a little bit right now. So I'm going to skip, I'm going to go right to consent agenda, I'll come back. So consent agenda, at this time, I need President Pro Temp, Akil Peck, please read.
Thank you, President. Consent agenda, that the consent agenda proposed set forth at the regular meeting of March 3, 2025 are either one acted, accepted for the record, two referred to the committee name, three waived from committee to be acted upon as proposed, or four consented to as proposed. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to read these, okay? Make sure that you pull out whichever one that you're, you plan to instate your name. 7.1A, B, C.
Poll.
C. Counselor Hart.
Sadie had it.
All right. All right. All right, D. 8.0 new business.
Poll, Hart.
8.1? Oh, did you say 8.1?
No, not yet. I just said 8.0 new business. 8.1?
Poll.
All right. 8.2?
Poll.
8.3?
Poll.
That's A. And B?
And B, please.
All right. Okay. 8.4?
Poll, 8.4, five and six.
8.5? 8.6?
That's, I apologize, poll four and five.
Oh, you pulled.
And, and six.
All right, because I didn't call it, so I didn't know. All right. All right. Okay, 8.7, A, B, and now 8.8?
Poll, Counselor, Pro Temp Peck.
All right, President, okay. All right, that's the last one there. Let's go to President Pro Temp. Go ahead, read.
Thank you. All items have the unanimous support of City Council are hereby adopted with a single roll call vote. The motions are seconded, the chair calls roll call, and the chair declares the motion to be unanimously voted on and adopted. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Hart?
Yes.
President Dominguez? Yes. Counselor Sadie?
Yes.
President Pro Temp Peck?
Yes.
Counselor Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Dice?
Yes.
You have six yes. Thank you so much. All right, at this time, I'm going to call on Counselor Sadie, 8.3A, and then subsection B. I'm going to have the chief, please come forward. Chief Wright?
8.2 or 8.3?
No, it's 8.3, renewal of Exxon. That's why we wanted the chief here tonight.
All right.
You can ask him later. We want to hear from the contract first.
Move the cam.
Second.
8.3A, City Council hereby approves a five-year contract with Exxon in the amount of $2,183,794 for body worn cameras and other necessary equipment. The City Council further authorized the mayor to sign any and all documents necessary. Defects rate said purchase funding is available under 36420102-57350AX025.
Okay, did someone second that?
I did.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Rosario. All right, you have the floor.
Thank you. Through you, Council President, to Chief Wright, my understanding is that this is a original contract five years ago that we're in the process of renewing for additional five years. Having reviewed minutes from five years ago, I believe the contract at that point in time was about 1.2 million. And I'm just wondering, have there been any problems with the system that we leased five years ago?
Thank you, sir, for that inquiry. The transition has been smooth and to this date, we have not had any major issues or concerns with Exxon.
Thank you. And you're comfortable this matter did not go out to bed, just renewed a contract?
Correct, it was a renewal.
Thank you. No further questions.
All right, thank you, Counselor Sadie. Any other counselor I wish to address? Counselor Hart?
Thanks, chief. I just had one very brief question, which is, my impression of the market for these sort of equipment is that it's not unlike our personal devices, there's really only one or two major suppliers that can provide this kind of equipment. Is that correct? Was there any other companies that we considered the first time around when we were looking at this equipment?
The first time around, we did locate or attempt to locate other vendors. However, from research and trial and error and conversation with other departments, not just Connecticut, but nationwide, Exxon was determined to be the best selection and choice for the services we needed.
Okay. Thank you very much, Saul.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Let's go with President Pro Temp Peck, and then we'll come to you because he had his hand raised first. Go ahead.
Thank you, President Dominguez. Through you to Chief Wright. Thank you, sir, for coming here tonight because I know you're very busy, but I'm glad to see that you're being proactive and thinking ahead as far as making sure that we have the best technology for our officers to be able to keep themselves safe and all of us residents. When I was the Liaison for Public Safety, I'm familiar with this because we had several conversations about the software. And as you just stated, you know, we kind of waited to roll out a lot of the body cams, and you stated to see how other departments were doing with it, how they were working with it, the different kinds of software and different kind of devices that they had. And like you just stated, you know, I'm glad that we have the best of the best. And like every other technology that we have, our laptops, our computers, they have a lifespan. You know, I think it was like every five years or so, you have to like, you know, like re, you know, buy new equipment or new software. So I will support this, and I just wanted to just make a statement and just thanking you and your leadership and all of the officers that are out there every day keeping us safe and looking ahead and being proactive as far as your approach on getting us the best quality devices out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peck. We are absolutely appreciative of the support of the council and the members of our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dice?
Through you, President, to the chief. I was on council at that time when we were going through what would be the best camp. And I just want to say, we know that it was going to be renewed for five years, so I'm glad that we didn't have any problems with this company. And just want to remind people that the body cam is protection for our police officer and also for our resident. It is a way to keep everyone safe. So when we were advocating for it during that time, it was a resource for our community. So I just wanted to make sure that that's on the record, and I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I have a question too quickly. Chief, I know going back, a while back, but I remember that we also selected Exxon because there was something about the storage, that they were able to store, like a lot of the video, was something like that, I remember? Is that correct?
Yes. One of the benefits of Exxon is it allows for cloud storage. We don't necessarily have the infrastructure to support the bandwidth that we would need for servers. This cloud server or storage allows us to maintain our videos. It has also proven to be beneficial in the aspect that when we need to recover video data from community, we can offer a link in which we can be accepted of that. It also allows us to support recovered data to the courts, so it cuts down late hours in regards to transferring or transitioning data to thumb drives or hard drives. Sometimes the data can be very lengthy, so it has benefited us in that aspect.
Thank you, chief. All right, Counselor Sadie?
Thank you. Through you, Council President, to, and I'm not really sure whether it be Budget Director or Chief of Police. So quick math, not precise math, but if in fact we authorize this contract at 1.2 million five years ago, about a 20% increase per year, give or take some percentage as we walk, work up the ladder, would be 800,000. And we're now asking for 2 million, which is about 800,000. So how do we think that a 20% per annum increase is something that is something this city can afford? This has nothing to do with the equipment itself or the service provided, but you know, we talk about 3%, you know, pay raises and 0% or 1% for Board of Education budgets, yet this body cam here, we're going with almost a single source provider and seeing almost an 80% increase.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you want me to answer that, but I know the price is somewhat higher, but I believe that's due to some of the additional, some additional services with this as well, correct? Isn't it beyond the, some of the cameras? I'm not familiar with the exact items that are being purchased, but I believe it's beyond the cameras. There may be some other drones of some nature that the state has indicated to utilize those funds for. Is that correct, chief?
It's important to note that as technology increases and advances, so is the body worn cameras, they have moved into a secondary phase where we had camera version two, where Exxon three, both in-car cruiser cams as well as with body worn cams, which give a better overall view. And if you look at the new contract, it also allows us to update our cameras midway through the contract. This past contract, we were able to upgrade our body worn cameras and our tasers as part of the contract. So during the phase of this contract, we will have two updates, new versions of each one of cruiser, excuse me, body worn cams as well as tasers, as well as the technology that has advanced in regards to these body worn cameras and tasers.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
All right, so that's, that's A, right? That's the first one. So let's vote on that. Okay? All right, so all those in favor for the renewal of Exxon service contract, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. All right. So now the ordinance for the Exxon contract.
8.3B?
Yeah, that's used. Yep.
Second.
Yep.
Ordinance for Exxon contracts, City Council, number 0303-25-01. In 20,72,636,000, from CTOPM, we're able to purchase an Exxon body cam. Of course, another new contract, ordinance is due for certain reasons. Cross the path of title warning. All councils having copies, we're agreeing, so we can vote to adopt by the vote.
Anybody have questions? All right, we're going to vote, this is a roll call vote, City Council, Jonathan Aljala, go ahead. President Pro Temp Peck?
Yes.
Counselor Rosario?
Yes.
Counselor Hart?
Yes.
Counselor Sadie?
Yes.
President Dominguez? Yes. Counselor Dice?
Yes.
You have six yes. Okay, the motion carries. Since we have the chief here, we're going to move right to 8.2, purchase of police vehicle. Sadie, second?
Purchase of police vehicles, we counted by approved for purchase of 2,002,54 police and second, third vehicle for David Rose LLC and equipment from, in honor of US, Simon Chris LLC, $91,980. Council for the loss of the made signing, and the necessary capital to purchase, 2240122-51533.
Through you, Council President, to Chief Wright, $91,000 and $980 seems to be a lot of money for a single cruiser. Could you explain to us why this vehicle is so expensive?
Thank you. Good question. I asked myself the same question. It's based on the cost of the vehicle along with the technology and the LPR systems that are included.
Thank you, sir.
In the system, thus rising to the cost in which it was. And I'm happy to mention that we were able to secure this under a grant, so there's no cost to the city.
And so what you're saying is that this vehicle comes with specialized electronics such as plate readers and things like that?
Yes, sir, LPRs, license plate readers, yes, sir.
Okay. And that will help you with law enforcement?
Correct, sir. We have utilized it in multiple occasions in regards to at incidents of crime where we can scan a neighborhood rather than the traditional way of taking down plates. We can scan through an area and pick up plates of vehicles, and it's also helped in regards to securing warrant arrests as well.
And the best of my recollections, I believe we purchased one of these vehicles two or three years ago.
Yes, we were also, were able to secure one previously through a grant.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Okay. Go ahead, President Pro Temp Peck?
Thank you, President Dominguez. I'm glad that you, Counselor Sadie had polled this, so that way residents can hear exactly where the funding is coming from, because a lot of times residents hear misinformation that, you know, the city's spending $90,000, $91,000 on a new truck for police officers to ride around in, and that's not the case here. It's grant money, so it's not costing the city a dime. So thank you for highlighting that. And I just want to, for the record, just have that added, that, so that way anyone can come back and refer to this, to this item and read it for themselves that it's not costing the city a dime. And I'm thankful again that you're being proactive, that this device will help speed up the work for our officers so that they could, you know, aid in locating a lost, you know, or adopted loved one or someone in certain situations. So, you know, I always look at some of these technologies to aid and help us in certain ways, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, so just a question. So is this like an upgrade from the one that we bought last, a couple, three years ago?
As with all technology, it never stands still. It always advances, and this would be an updated, more elevated version of our current one.
Yeah, no, and I will support, of course, and I'm glad it's a grant, but whether, you know, I mean, it's vital, it's vital for the law enforcement here, and I know all over the nation, they, they have these types of vehicles, so, so I'm glad that we're getting it for, for our police officers. All right, so with that, anybody else? We're going to vote on this? If not, we'll vote, okay? Let's vote on the police vehicle, all right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Chief Wright, thank you this evening, thank you for coming tonight. And Chief Wright, before you leave, there's something happening Thursday, right? Is it the graduation?
Correct. We are having a graduation for our, this year's version of our Citizens Police Academy at New London Police Department. As always, everyone is invited to partake in the festivities and the celebration of our community members who have elected to learn a little more about the New London Police Department and once again allow us to engage and take advantage of the opportunity to give them a better insight to what we do. And on the behalf of the men and women of the New London Police Department, thank you for your constant support. It is much appreciated, it allows us to provide an elevated service to our communities which are rightly deserved. Thank you once again.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for all the work you do and all the police officers too.
Much appreciated, thank you. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. All right, so with that, we're going to return back to... All right, here we go. All right, I want to say hello to our City Council's three liaison, Jaden Alexis. Thank you for being here this evening, as always. You have the time, whenever you have to go, you know you're more than welcome to go ahead and leave, but thank you for being here tonight, as always. All right, with that, we're going to go right into Director of Law. Any questions for the Director of Law this evening? All right, we got City Counselor, all right, Sadie?
Through you, Council President Dominguez, to Attorney Largan. Under the general side, number one, relocation needs prepared payoff figure for lien and sent to closing attorney. Could you explain that, please?
Yeah, sure. We just, several times, regularly, I should say, the city has to pay relocation benefits when a property is condemned for code enforcement purposes and tenants are relocated. We lien the property where the tenant used to live when they move on. And over the course of times, those liens get squared up either when the property is refinanced or sold, or a landlord wants to clear up title. And so this was just a situation when a property was selling, had a relocation lien in favor of the city, and they called, we gave them the payoff figure and got reimbursed for what we paid for the relocation of a tenant several years ago.
Thank you. Also on the general side, number four, Mohawk Development emails with PW and ODP regarding ownership question of a portion of Central Ave.
Yep, this is a development that's going in down Central Avenue, Lewis Street, down under the bridge there. And there was some questions about ownership of a stretch of center, Central Avenue, and we just did some investigating. Turns out that the question, or the section of street in question... Turns out that the question, or the section of street in question was deeded to the private, uh, owner, uh, back in the sixties, and so we were just working with their surveyor and their engineers, they're putting together plans for a development down there.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Director Landrigan. All right, with that, we'll move on to, uh, no council committee reports, and now we have the mayor's office communications. Good evening, Mayor Passo, you have the floor?
Good evening, President Dominguez, members of council. Counsel Sadi, you have my call. Okay. Oh, yeah, that one's all right. Oh, I'll use, I'll just, I'll just use this one.
The big one's on.
No, it's...
Yeah, three.
Okay. Our continuing, uh, IT challenges. Try the new one, how's that? Okay. Good evening, Mr. President, members of council. I have to start off with the sad news of the passing of an important, um, figure on the political, um, political, uh, community here in New London, and that's, uh, Dr. David Hayes. Um, I know that the president served when Mr. Hayes was active, I don't know if anybody else did, um, perhaps you, John, I don't know if he was still active when, when you got elected, uh, but he was very active when I first began, uh, in elected office. Uh, he was a well-known radiologist and practiced at Lawrence Amory Hospital from nineteen fifty-seven until he retired in nineteen ninety-five. He, um, like I said, he was a fixture, he passed away on February fourteenth. His daughter was former Representative Holly Cheeseman, that connection I didn't know until years later. Uh, he, uh, lived on Ocean Avenue in this very beautiful house, uh, and raised his children there. Um, he's just, he used to be, he used to speak at, uh, public comment, pretty much every councilor, he was, uh, understood the, um, the issues that the city faced and always had, um, advice and opinion to offer. So, uh, we extend our sympathies to Dr. Hayes's families. I did, I did attend, uh, family, I did attend his, uh, his funeral, uh, this past Saturday. Um, on some lighter news, I have some promotions to announce at, uh, from the fire department. Fire Inspector David Heine has been, uh, offered the position of fire marshal, and there'll be a swearing-in ceremony in the near future. Also, uh, three firefighters, uh, have been offered and have accepted the position of fire lieutenant. That is Diego Barboza, Brian De Silva, and Evan Giesing, so congratulations to the three of them, and that swearing-in ceremony will be, the date will be announced, and I'm, I'm sure to get the word to you when they, when they do that. A couple of, um, milestones in the career of, of two of our police officers, congratulations to Ryan Linderson on completing seven years, seventeen years of service, and Officer John Green on completing fourteen years of service. Very proud to have so many of our employees, um, continue their careers here and have long careers in the city of New London, I think it, it speaks a lot for the working environment here. Um, and, uh, Chief Wright already spoke to the graduation ceremony at the Citizens Police Academy, so that'll be March sixth at six P M. Hope to see you all there. Uh, this past Sunday, the twenty-third, week ago Sunday, we had the Dominican flag raising at City Hall, uh, for the, uh, it's, it's held on Dominican Independence Day every year. And actually, I'll note that it was the first, the Dominican community was the first community that approached the city about holding, uh, a flag raising to celebrate their, their anniversary, and it has started a great tradition, so, um, for instance, on Friday the fourteenth, we will be replacing the Dominican flag with the Irish flag. And throughout the year, of course, as you know, uh, many of our, uh, ethnic communities, um, host a flag raising in front of City Hall, I think it's a great tradition. Um, congratulations to Mitchell College, on the same day, uh, they had their annual event marking, um, Black Heritage Month, and it was a really, really impressive, well-attended event, um, and I know I saw a number of you there that day. Um, the Irish Parade, which really kicks off our, our season downtown, um, I could tell you that normally the restaurants are struggling to make it to St. Patrick's Day, um, uh, because it's a, it's a, generally, not St. Patrick's, well, St. Patrick's Day, too, but the, the parade day is, uh, a revenue generator for our businesses downtown. Uh, I could tell you, though, uh, this winter has been, uh, the downtown has been really lively and busy, um, and, uh, it's, it's heartening to see that. Uh, so, uh, we look forward to a successful event, as always. Let's see if I'm forgetting anything here now. Um, well, I do wanna, I do wanna address tonight's elephant in the room, which is the community garden, um, and I would wanna acknowledge that, um, I did see our partner from Habitat here earlier, though, oh, there's Sarah, um, our partner from Habitat is here, uh, proud to have that partnership, and we're very excited about this development opportunity. Do wanna correct, um, Counsel Dice, it'll be six, six units of housing, three two-family housings, uh, with two-family, uh, structures with, uh, homeownership opportunities. I'm disappointed, uh, in the garden, of course, I understand the importance of it, but it is certainly, um, it is certainly, um, only being moved for, um, a much, I believe, a much higher use, I don't even think it's, it's debatable. Um, I would've hoped that, um, there would've been more of a thank you to the city for, for fifteen years of utilizing that yacht, that lot, that vacant lot for a, uh, a great purpose, um, instead of, um, now the opposition to using it for a higher and better use to serve the community. Um, we are investing in that neighborhood heavily. The third phase of the William Street Improvement Project is expected to enter the construction phase within the next twelve months or so, it's at thirty percent design. This is the third phase of our William Street Corridor Project, which started behind Con College, the first phase, came down the hill to about, um, the housing complex there, halfway down the hill, and the next stage will complete the road improvements, um, and the, um, street, um, improvements, sidewalks and, uh, lighting and, um, tree improvements, uh, to the rest of the section through Hodge's Square. We're also, that, that's like a three million dollar project, we're also, um, creating a, a park around Briggs Brook, and we're creating that long sought-after connection between Hodge's Square and downtown, uh, that will, that will, there will be a pedestrian walkway, I think it's already in, along Briggs Brook. We've removed all of the invasive species and have a contract to continue that work to make sure that they are fully eradicated, um, installing new trees and saving other trees, so, instead of having a fenced-in, overgrown space, and that truly is, I, I believe, open space, whereas the garden was on a building lot. We have three building lots that are gonna be used for what their purpose is, to describe that as open space. The open space is across the street, it's Riverside Park. So I encourage you to embrace this project, embrace our partner in Habitat, they've done great work for us over the years, and this is an important, um, you know, another important project in, um, providing quality housing and homeownership opportunities. I do wanna point out some other great news on that front that I received today, the annual report on affordable housing percentages in the municipalities across the state came out today, and for twenty twenty-four, New London is at twenty-three point thirty-nine percent. Now, we, we've been concerned for years with all of the market rate development, we have, as I've said numerous times, concentrated, also concentrated equally on partnering with affordable and workforce housing partners, and, um, and we've had numerous parts, projects that have been completed or are underway or in the pipeline, but we have, we have tried very diligently to maintain our percentage of affordable housing, and in fact, rather than dropping, despite the number of units of, of market rate housing that we've, we've, uh, we've put in, um, our, that twenty-three point three nine percent has increased from twenty twenty-three's number, which was twenty-two point nine seven percent. So we're ma, we're making headway, and going back to twenty nineteen, it was twenty-two point eight three percent. Um, this came in late this afternoon, so I didn't, I wasn't able to get every year's numbers, but we are trending in the right direction, and we will continue to work hard in that direction. And of course, we've always supported the community gardens, we've always supported fresh generously, and, um, and we will continue that work as well, but there's, um, despite our attempt to maintain that garden in its current location, that didn't work out with the development, and I, I think we just have to, um, strengthen our partnership and work better together to fulfill the needs of the whole city. So, thank you.
All right.
Oh, I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, any questions for the mayor? All right, President Pro Temp Beck?
Thank you, President Dominguez, I just, uh, just have a statement, I just wanna thank the mayor for, um, stating the facts, because like I always say, misinformation goes further than the truth, and, um, I'm just glad that you touched on housing, because that is a hot topic in this city, and we all know that people love to talk about it, because we are all concerned, making sure that, that there is, um, affordable housing for people in the city, and I'm glad that you touched on the fact that New London has gone above and beyond, um, our ask as far as, uh, affordable and, uh, um, uh, these different housing, uh, for everyone here in the city. And, um, I'm also glad that our own state representative, Anthony Nolan, uh, introduced a bill, uh, this week, touching on this subject. It's, uh, bill HB number six one two six, and it's, uh, is asking all, um, towns, surrounding towns, to put in their share as far as, uh, for housing. Um, so I'm glad to see that we're having this conversation and that people are actually putting forth action as far as addressing the need, um, for, for affordable, um, housing. So I just wanted to bring that point up, and as far as the, the garden, the community garden, um, I'm glad that we are, um, working with community garden to find a location. I know it's gonna be a little bit of a, of a hassle as far as moving it, and again, I respect what you guys have done for the community, um, but again, I, I like Habitat for Humanity, I like this organization, I'm very familiar with it, um, and they have a, a long track record of, uh, providing a lot of, uh, families with a new start and a new way to, um, to develop, you know, memories, uh, for their families, and, um, you know, I will support Habitat for Humanity again, and I just think that, um, it just comes down to, uh, what's, what's right, and I know in your heart you think that having a garden there is right, but we, we can't stand in the way of affordable housing for, for a family, um, that's just not what we do as a community, and, uh, that's just not something that I would like to see, so, um, you know, it's a garden, I mean, I like to garden, I have a garden, um, but again, you know, we, we can't stand in the way of, of a place for someone to live. Um, so, you know, again, I don't wanna keep going on about the topic, but, um, I'm just glad that we were able to state the facts. Thank you.
All right, with that, we will go to the top of the, uh, receive for the record or refer to committee. We have Counsel Sadi, which is, uh, seven point one C.
Make a motion that the, uh, council receive for the record, report complaints on commission, read section eighty-two for referral, volume forty-five, forty-nine, sixty-one.
Okay.
Second that.
All right, okay.
Make a motion, uh, amend that, receive for the record, and also add in slash for referral to the Public Works Committee and the Public Welfare Committee. Just a point of clarification, we don't have to amend it to refer it, right?
We could just make a referral to those committees if, if you so wanted? Uh, in one step rather than two?
I guess that would be, uh, point of order to Attorney Landrigan, uh, the CAM only reports received for the record, and, um, amending the CAM, uh, to state, receive for the record and refer to Public Works and Public Welfare Committee. Uh, does, does that need to be made in a motion to amend, or can that just be added?
Yes, since you, since you wanna do both, I would say that it should be an amendment. Uh, if you were going to just refer it rather than accept it for the record, you could do it in one step, but if you wanna accept it for the record as is and also propose, um, uh, referrals to committees, I would say that it would be to amend it.
Thank you.
In that case, I'd be happy to second Counsel Sadi's amendment.
Thank you.
So, any, any discussion on that amendment?
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, so, um, all of us received a, uh, email on two twenty-four from Counsel Pack, uh, talked about, uh, community engagement and garden locations, and, uh, some of the, um, requests, uh, that were made from the gardeners, including, um, a written plan and a, and a memorandum of agreement, uh, so that we can address, uh, different costs associated with moving this garden, um, and, uh, you know, there, there was also some talk about loss of property and time, and then also timelines for relocation, uh, and then also New London Greenspace Committee, et cetera, so I think that there's a need for much more discussion, I do not, I totally favor the, um, rehabilitation of these three lots, um, but I also believe that we have to take into consideration of the concerns and the needs, uh, of the gardeners, so, the reason for my amendment is that we can, uh, slow this down a little bit, uh, get more input, and a joint Public Works slash Public Welfare Committee. Thank you.
All right, let me, I have a question, uh, question, this is for either Attorney Landrigan or, or the mayor. Uh, so, um, aren't we doing this already? Aren't we looking for a site? Eventually, we mentioned that we were looking for a site to transfer the, the garden somewhere else. Isn't, isn't that what we're doing already? Am I wrong, or?
Can I, can... Um, the most important, I mean, as far as, um, cooperating with the garden, the city has a track record of doing that, it's, it's offensive, number one, that they decide to pick a fight rather than work with us, but that's fine. It's not the first time. Um, the most important thing about this project is, I heard Counsel Sadi say, slow down, there's no slowing down when you're dealing with a developer, money's on the line, they're already spending money, they're moving along, they have to get their financing in order. Um, the next step is transferring title of this property to Habitat, that has to happen on time when we bring you that proposal. Other than that, working with the garden is, is fine, it's important, and it's important to the neighborhood, to reestablish a garden somewhere else, but we cannot jeopardize the development opportunity we have here. We've been waiting, I don't know how long those properties, well, I guess, um, thanks to, um, some education by Mr. Stoller, um, apparently those properties have never been developed, so, um, and there's very little developable land in the city of five and a half square miles, so, uh, it's an opportunity that we, that we have to take advantage of.
All right, so if that's gonna be, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote for this amendment, I will not be voting. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right. Councillor Hart.
Yes, the memorandum that Councillor Sadi brought up, memorandum of understanding, that's a proposed memorandum, is that correct? It hasn't been agreed to yet? It was just a request to establish a memorandum of understanding, is that?
I don't know anything about memorandum.
All right. You know, I know you've committed before us to working with the community garden. I appreciate that. I don't think there's anything wrong with putting it in writing or committing to in what ways will help the garden if that's going to make this transition smoother. And I think if we have such a valuable asset as this arable soil, making sure it gets moved to a usable location and not a location where there's issues, you know, that's all well and good to be considered either here tonight or at a committee meeting. But it never hurts to put those things in writing.
Point of order.
All right. Hold on. Let me just see. Councillor Hart, you're the floor.
Yeah, you.
All right. Councillor Dice?
I just want to make sure I have clarification. Basically, we're saying we're going to take this and move it to Public Works. And so do that have anything to do with the CAM? Are you saying to move the CAM? I mean, I'm trying to understand the purpose from this, President. So if I can direct that question.
You want to direct it to the mayor?
Really, to Sadi.
Oh, to Sadi. That's fine.
This is his poll. And I'm just trying to understand what is the outcome? What is he trying to get out of it?
So what I'm trying to get out of it is referring to the committee, accepting the 824 and allowing for the mayor to move forward, but at the same time referring it to committee so that we can study what needs to be done. I mentioned timelines, open space, loss of property. That's my main concern. Our Riverside community gardeners have invested their time, energy, and limited financial resources into growing their plots, buying seeds, plants, composts, and other necessary. They have spent countless hours cultivating their plots in hopes of providing nutritious food to their families. Relocating the garden results in both a direct and indirect financial loss that must be addressed. Okay? Reading that, it sounds to me as if, in fact, we don't address that, and I'm not trying to pit one against the other, there may be lawsuits coming. You know, in other words, these people have invested up to 15 years of their lives in these gardens. And I believe it's up to us, the council, who is agreeing to this 824 acceptance, to direct the mayor to, in good faith, negotiate and come up with a memorandum of understanding, including a timeline, so that we can avoid future problems. And again, that's why it's referred to Public Works, because Public Works may be the one to need trucks to move the soil. It has been discussed here today. And again, originally, I had thought that possibly a simple move across the street to the Riverside Park may be good, but I guess through further investigation, that may not be the best place. So I think that we need to figure out what is a good place for this garden to be moved to. And I'm sure that the mayor is going to do that because, like he said earlier, he's always worked with the community gardens in the city. But this year is just an assurance and a protection, and that's the reason for my amendment. Thank you. Does that answer your question, Madam?
I understand what you just said, but I am concerned. And the reason why I'm concerned, because it sound like there isn't trust. And one of the things that I know, the relationship that we had with Fresh and with Riverside Conservancy, is that when there have been a need, we have, the city, and I know since I've been sitting on council, have been very supportive to Fresh. And I know at the last meeting, one of the things that came up was, could we have support to move and get the water? Because that was one of the things I was concerned about. Will we be able to get the water open and so forth? I really don't want to micromanage. We got a lot of things to deal with in our city. And I appreciated the partnership that we have had over the years with the city and with Fresh when they said, "We need this. Can we move here? We need that." And I witnessed it. And this include the grant that we just received over on Cotter Street and making sure that extra things are developed. We are only, what, six and a quarter big, large? And we do have different plots that we could expand. At least I would hope so. In other words, I don't want to go down this rabbit hole right here at this council meeting where... So if you think that, yeah, they need to refer to Public Works and so forth, I just don't want this CAM to get hemmed up because we're not being fair. And I'm thinking, wait a minute. And including when Fresh was in the schools at Jenny's. I mean, we have a long history of how we partner with them and support them. And I can say I seen that on and off council. So I guess I just don't want to make it where... I don't want a situation that we're having a fight with our allies because them doing food security is an ally. That is a support. Us making sure that they have a spot to do it in, that's support. That is a partnership. I want to have still a good partnership. And as I'm listening to this, it doesn't sound like that. It sound like we're criticizing each other and not looking how we can make sure that we can have it a win-win, where we can have food available, gardens, teaching our young people, our families, how to have gardens, and then also making sure that we have housing available, houses that is affordable. That's the thing. Because we have houses, you know, but they're not like 100... You know, what is it, 125,000? I mean, that's unheard of. So I don't want to lose that CAM. So I'm just putting that out there. I yield the floor.
Okay. Let's go to President Paul Tempack.
Thank you, President Dominguez. Thank you, Sadi, for at least listening to the community garden group, as I did when they forwarded us the invitation or sent us the invitation. But I have to agree with Councillor Dice because the same group, I have seen that is a part of the community garden, that's a part of Fresh, that's a part of all these different organizations because they're all intertwined. They always talk about affordable housing. And I'm just lost because I don't know which direction we're going. Like, it's the same group that's always coming before council every year, asking about affordable housing. What is the city doing to address it? And here we have a good partnership with Habitat Humanity, who are doing just that, adding to the home stock, to the community, homes where people can lay down their roots and start a family. And we're arguing about where to place the garden. I'm just... I just don't understand it. I just don't understand how we've gotten to this point where the same group that's intertwined with advocating for affordable housing is now fighting against affordable housing. It's the craziest thing, and there's no other word that I can come up with. It's the craziest thing that I just can't understand it. Because after we move forward from this CAM, we're going to have the same group that is intertwined with this group coming before council, talking about affordable housing right after we finish this CAM. And it's just ludicrous. So, I mean, they brought up some good points. I listened to them. I took phone calls from residents. I listened to them. But there was some good points about having a commission for green spaces. I love that idea. That's something we can talk about after. But I mean, this deal here, you can't slow up production because that just makes it more expensive, you know? And time is money, and we all know that. So we just have to just go along with what we have for now. There's a lot of other places that have gardens. Like I said, last council meeting, there is going to be adding snack beds at the community center. There's snack beds that's going to be added at the Hempstead House, thank you, Hempstead House neighborhood. So there's a lot of gardens popping up all over the place, or snack beds, if you will. So I just, like I said, I just don't understand it. Like I said, again and again and again, it's the same group that's going to be crying to us later on about what are we doing about affordable housing? And here we have a way to address that, and we're arguing about it. So I yield the floor.
All right. Okay. I'm going to have Councillor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the law director. I know this is not an action item for us to vote on, the dispensation of the property sale. This is a receive and refer of a report. I was wondering... So after we leave here tonight, is the sale entirely up to the mayor's office already, or would it have to come back to the council at some point?
No, it has to come back to the council.
Okay. When would that appear? Next month?
I don't know. My office hasn't been involved with any of the negotiations or discussions to this point, but there will need to be a vote by this council whether or not to sell the property or deed it or convey it. Or I'm assuming it's donated, but I don't know 100%. But to convey the property to Habitat for Humanity.
Okay. But that wouldn't happen tonight. It's not on the agenda.
There's not anything on the agenda to have that happen tonight, no.
Okay. Then, yeah, I guess I don't really understand what's the hurry? Why are we arguing? If there's nothing... We're not holding up the sale tonight by having additional conversation. And I guess I don't understand, you know, with respect to Councillor Dice, the argument that we want to have a win-win on the one hand, but we don't want to instruct the mayor to find a win-win on the other hand. And we have a mayor who's saying, "Well, I'm here for the compromise, and I want to do the compromise, but please don't make me write the compromise down." I just, if everyone's operating in good faith, I see no reason why we can't have a civilized discussion and write down what support the city intends to give the garden without holding up the sale of this property. I don't think any of those things would hold up the sale of this property. We could get them done by the time we have our next regular business meeting and approve the sale. This is not a big ask, I don't think. I mean, to belabor the point, when I was a contractor, you know, I liked the word memorandum of understanding a lot better because it's a picture of the trust that exists between two parties at a point in time. Everyone knows things change, but, you know, when things do fall apart, sometimes it's better that you have at one point wrote down that you trusted each other to do certain things. Doesn't solve every problem, but I think it's worth doing. That's all I have on this. I don't know why this is a big deal.
All right. So listen, we're going to vote on this amendment, okay? We're going to vote on it. So remember, if it's a yes, then we're going to add it to, and then if it's a no, then it loses. All right? All right. Yeah. So we're voting on the amendment to accept the amendment that Councillor Sadi just proposed. Okay? The amendment is to refer it to Public Works and Public Welfare, was it?
Public Works and Public Welfare, yes.
Okay. All right. Okay? So if you vote yes, it's going to go there, all right? But if you vote no, then it stops, all right? Everybody set? Okay. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Two ayes. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay. So it's 4-2-2. So the motion... The amendment, excuse me. Thank you, sir. The amendment, okay, does not pass. Now we're going to vote for the main motion, which is to accept it, all right? Accept it, all right? So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay? So it has been accepted for the record. Thank you. All right. We'll move on. The next one is, that's you, Councillor Hart, 8.1 Mill Rate Stabilization Fund.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I will move the CAM 8.1. Thank you, Councillor Sadi, that the city hereby adopts Resolution 030325-01 and establishes a Mill Rate Stabilization Fund. Seems like a major change to the city's finances. I was wondering if the mayor had a presentation to go along with this major change?
Just repeat the question, sorry.
The Mill Rate Stabilization Fund, did you have anything to present to us in relation to that?
Yeah. Well, as you know, we're dealing with a major loss of state funding for the upcoming fiscal year. We've actually been discussing establishing a Mill Rate Stabilization Fund for a number of years. During the successful years would have been the time to get it started, but we, for one reason or another, hadn't moved forward with it. The concept is, instead of when there's a surplus at the end of a fiscal year and after the audit, the surplus is confirmed, that money would generally fall into the fund balance. David, you can jump in anytime if you want, but it would generally fall into the fund balance. This is a tool where if we're meeting our fund balance requirements under the fund balance policy, that we could divert part of the surplus into this Mill Rate Stabilization Fund, as we do, by the way, with our... We often divert some of the surplus into our capital reserve account. And that gives us more flexibility. In the case of the Mill Rate Stabilization Fund, if, once we have this established, it will be available to us as we're putting together a very difficult budget for FY '26 to help us replace some of the lost revenue from the state for this year. And it's a pretty simple concept. Otherwise, surplus money falls into the fund balance, and the fund balance keeps growing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up, so this is very similar to the Board of Education's Non-Lapsing Fund that we established several years ago as a rainy day fund, so to speak?
It would essentially be a designated fund balance, which the non-lapsing fund is part of the fund balance, but it's a designated fund balance. It's very bad fiscal policy where the rating agencies never like to see a municipality rating their fund balance to plug one-time revenue losses. So it helps us to avoid that. As long as we're maintaining our fund balance in accordance with the fund balance policy, there would be no negative ramifications. So I just want to confirm everything that I said with our financial expert.
That was a very good explanation. I was going to go into it, but you pretty much covered most of it. I also provided the fund balance policy spreadsheet for all of you to look at. If you had any questions on that, I can happily go through that with you as well.
Thanks. Just one further follow-up, if I can, which is that, you know, we did establish that non-lapsing fund for the board several years ago when times were, in fact, good. And I agree that this would have been a very good idea a few years ago when times were good. My concern is that this year, when the Board of Ed is planning on removing money from its non-lapsing fund, it is not the best year to start funding our non-lapsing fund. It just... I'm going to have to say that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I'd like to make it make sense to me, so I plan on referring this to the Finance Committee for further discussion, and I welcome the opportunity to learn more about how this is going to play out in the budget season. But I don't think I could just support it without further discussion, being such a large change.
That's fine. The only opportunity we have for it is before the audit is completed. So we're in that phase between the draft audit, which confirms how much of a surplus we have. So we need it passed tonight, or it will not be a tool that I have to... The budget has to be put together, and I have to announce it April 1st. So I don't, you know, basically referring it to committee kills its usefulness for us for this year. And also, it makes no difference that this, as long as we're meeting the fund balance policy that we established, it makes no difference. The Board of Ed's planning on withdrawing, to my understanding, all of their non-lapsing money that's accumulated in the fund balance. It makes no difference to our fund balance policy. It makes no difference to our fund balance policy, because it's never been part of the undesignated fund balance. So, it doesn't matter. And this money, we just are preventing it from becoming part of the undesignated fund balance. Once we meet our fund balance requirements for this year, well, for the year closing June 30th, 2024, then we have this option. And the director would not be recommending it if we did not have that flexibility.
Okay.
I appreciate that you've let me have a number of questions. I want to give everyone else a chance to speak, but I'd like to reserve my right to ask additional questions when everyone else is gone.
You got it. All right, I saw Counselor Dice, you had your hand up.
So, I just want to make sure I have this understanding. And you brought something up, Counselor Hart, that the school decide that they may have to to deplete their fund balance, or not fund balance, but their non-lapsing balance. So, Mayor, say something, come up with one of the school buildings, and we have to replace a furnace or something like that. Would this fund be emergency in case that happened? I'm just throwing out, I'm just trying to figure out.
No, that would be, that would be the Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay, all righty. I'm just trying to...
This fund would only be to plug revenue shortfalls, one-time, anticipated one-time revenue shortfalls in a, basically a year like we're facing right now, preparing a budget for FY '26.
Okay, I appreciate that. It would be, okay.
And we don't, and we don't know at this point. I mean, the governor's budget shorts us, it's $2.5 million less in support. This all has to do with the revow. It all has to do with dropping the mill rate. I can explain that at an appropriate time. But it's not clear what the final budget's going to be yet. But we have to produce a budget, a proposed budget, by April 1st. So, we essentially have to go with the information we have. We set up this Mill Rate Stabilization Fund, and the General Assembly passes a budget that's much more favorable. It's not going to be a bad thing to have this Mill Rate Stabilization Fund there for the future, even if we don't need it this year.
Thank you for that clarification.
That, I'll have President Pro Tempeck.
Thank you, President Dominguez. Thank you, Mayor Pasero, for explaining it to everyone, and hopefully we can have it for the record so people can refer to it. Thank you, Counselor Hart, for at least asking the question about the, this cam. But, yeah, I'll be supporting this cam, because, you know, we have to balance the budget, you know? And we all don't want to run the risk of holding that up. And just a side note, that's why I'm in support of the Housing for Habitat, because that's a house that will be generating income to the city. So, just to throw that out there.
Any counselors over here? Sadie or Rosario? Nope, okay. All right, I'll come back to you. Go ahead, Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President, through you, to the mayor. Would the excess fund balance that's currently available be transferred immediately to this new fund?
There is no excess fund balance.
Until the audit comes in. You said when the audit is complete, they're very likely to determine the fund balance, and...
We don't know.
You're anticipating that there's a surplus there that could be moved to this fund?
We're not, we're no longer anticipating it. The draft audit has been complete. It's just got to be finalized. It's like an official act. So, in between that draft and the final budget, we know what the surplus is. And that's the period of time where we have to divert any excess money from falling into the fund balance.
So, that was a yes, that that money would, if we pass it tonight, that money would certainly go into the fund. That is, that is... No?
If I can interrupt, if this passes tonight, if, let's say it's a million-dollar number, that million dollar will move into the Mill Rate Stabilization Fund.
Okay, that's a yes. Thank you, Director McBride.
Maybe I didn't understand your question, but...
Clearly. So, I gotta, I gotta say, this comes to us on our agenda as approving an ordinance. I think by charter, it has to have three readings. Stop me if I'm off-base here.
It's not an ordinance, it's a resolution.
It's a what?
It's a resolution, just like when we passed the non-lapsing account for Board of Ed.
I don't know. I'm going to say you've had years to establish this fund. You've had months and weeks to talk to any of us about it. To spring this on us right before budget season, I think is, I'm going to say deliberate. This is meant to color what is available, you know, in this next, this upcoming budget fight.
Well, you're misguided, but fine, you have a right to your opinion. And actually, the governor just released his budget, and we just found out our state funding just three weeks ago, so...
It is a pity that our representatives are not here tonight, because I wanted to ask them how likely the governor's budget is to make it to the complete, make it through the session. We've had better luck betting on the legislative budget before. I can't support this cynical attempt to put money in a savings account meant for budget shortfalls when we have a budget shortfall. It's, if I couldn't pay my bills, how am I going to take money from one pocket, move it to the other, and say, "Oh, I'm even broker than before"? It just...
If I may...
Yeah, this is, this is a very cynical attempt to kick the school system while they're down.
All right, so, let me, I think I want to, you want to explain it, Director McBride? Is it, because I'm, I think we're ready to vote.
I just wanted to clarify that. We do this on a normal basis throughout the year. We have a workers' compensation fund. We have a LAPP Liability Autos and Properties Fund. We have the Bond Debt Reserve Fund. We have the Capital Reserve Fund. So, we routinely will make changes throughout the year. This is just another opportunity to put funds into another reserve fund, just like the Board, just like the Board of Ed, non-lapsing fund.
Okay, we're going to vote on it. Excuse me, let me turn on the mic. All right, so 8.1 Mill Rate Stabilization Fund, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Okay, so we have, what is it? Six to one, it passes. Five. I'm just, I'm testing you guys to see if you're paying attention. We have 8.4, that's Counselor Sadie.
Second.
It is $1 million for each property. And that's because the developers are not able to accept more than $1 million. Actually, it has to be a dollar less than $1 million. Once it hits the $1 million mark, then the entire development is subject to the prevailing wage. So, when developers ask the city to seek out this Brownfield grant for their projects, they're actually only requesting $1 million. So, it'll be $1 million. This is, this is three separate projects by this particular developer. It will be, I was looking for my notes, but it'll be in excess of 400 units combined. And it's just one piece of their financial stack that they have to put together in order to complete the development. So, they'll be covering the remainder of the cost of the remediation. And at this stage, there wouldn't, there would probably not be an environmental estimate as to what that would be. They don't get that. It, the enterprise zone provides a seven-year phase-in of the property tax. That would be the first two years, you continue to pay the existing property tax on the unimproved property. And then the full tax phases in over the next five years, starting with 20%, 40%, et cetera, till you pay 100% after seven years. That's the enterprise zone tax abatement. We don't have any requests at this point for any additional financing. That request will come in depending on how they end up financing the project.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Okay, any other counselors? All right, we're going to vote on 8.4, 150 Howard Street, the grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. 8.5, Sadie?
Move to cam.
Second.
Grant for 162 Howard Street and 77 Hamilton. City Council hereby resolves and authorize the mayor to apply for funding to the Connecticut Department of Economic Development Community Development Round 21 Brownfield municipal grant to fund the assessment and remediation project at 162 Howard and 77 Hamilton, and to sign any other documents necessary incidental to effectuating said grant. Due to the fact that I have a present personal and financial relationship with the present property owner at 162 Howard and 77 Hamilton, I plan to recuse myself from that, this vote. Do I need to step out of the...
All right, so let's vote. 8.5, Grant 162 Howard Street and 77 Hamilton Street. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. 8.6, 330 Bank Street, that's the grant. That's Counselor Sadie.
Move to cam.
Second.
City Council hereby resolves and authorizes the mayor to apply for funding under the Connecticut Department of Economic Community Development Round 21 Brownfield grant to fund the assessment and remediation project 330 Bank Street, and to sign any other documents necessary incidental to effectuating said grant. My questions, I believe the 330 Bank Street is the second half of the shore's landing, and I have no further questions.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll vote. Okay, 8.6, Grant 330 Bank Street. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. All right, 8.8, that's a letter supporting special education funding. That's President Pro Tempeck.
Move to cam.
Second, second for Counselors Rosario.
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this cam to just highlight and talk about it so that it can be added to the record and recorded. After talking to my fellow colleagues, I thought it was very fitting that we adapted a letter or drafted a letter to send to the governor in support of the special education funding. This fiscal year is going to be very strenuous on all of the cities and towns in the state. And I believe that is why our mayor is going ahead and being proactive, because no one has a crystal ball. No one knows what lies ahead. With the current status that we have in Washington, we don't know what more cuts are going to be made. So, we have to save and spend wisely. But we also need to grab whatever funding is available. And I'm full support of getting the funding that we need for special education for our schools. And that is why, that I hope that we can draft this letter to send to our governor, and I would like to sign it, and I'm asking all the counselors to sign this letter. And if the mayor would like to sign it as well, to go to Hartford to be in support of the bipartisanship that was done with passing this budget, this bill for this fund. That's supposed to go to the governor's desk. That's all.
Thank you. I know that some of the counselors are going to be working on this letter. Once they draft it, we can all sign it, of course, all right? Any questions, comments? All right, let's vote, okay, 8.8. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Last motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been seconded, all right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, this meeting has adjourned at 8:49 PM. Thank you, and have a good night.